All right, I'd like to call this meeting of the Marquette City Planning Commission to go to order. It's Tuesday, March 4th at 6:02 PM. We'll start with roll call. Wayne, if you'd like to start us out.
Margaret Rayner here.
Steve Lorrie here, and Kevin Clegg is here. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? I have presented. Also. All right, motion on the floor. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? All right, motion carries. Anybody take a look at the minutes? Can we approve those by consensus? Any additions, additions? All right. We're, well, seeing no changes. Well, any conflicts of interest today? All right, we'll move on to our first order of business. No public hearings today. Are there any citizens wishing to address the commission on agenda items? All right, seeing none. We'll move on. We've got no old business and four new business. We're looking at an election of officers. So we need nominations.
For chair and vice chair.
For chair and vice chair.
Let me say that Sarah Melfell, current chair, absent, said that she was, she would be glad to serve, continue to serve as chair if the board wants her to continue, or she's fine with somebody else being the chair. She's got one more year on her term. She said she either way is fine with her. So for what that's worth, I consider she could. Want to nominate Sarah, you can. She's not here. She'll be fine with it.
So do I need to make a nomination? I nominate Sarah as chair. And when somebody else wants to do it, I don't care.
All right, then we take a vote on that. Unless there's, are there any other nominations?
I'm just telling you what Robert said.
All right, seeing none, we'll vote on Sarah Melfell as our chair. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? All right, that motion carries. Sarah is our new, or they're continuing as our chair. For vice chair?
If they will nominate the commission for vice chair.
All right, are there, there is no motion. Are there any other nominations? Other nominations? Other nominations? There we go. All right, those in favor of Commissioner Clegg as vice chair? Say aye. All those opposed? Say fine. Motion carries. And third, we need a representative to the board of zoning appeals currently high serving on that.
I have another question. Do you find reviewing what the results voted would be?
Andrea does the liaison to the zoning appeals.
So the board of zoning appeals is different than planning commission? You're going to review, it's more of a quasi judicial board, you know? Planning commission's a little bit more administrative, you know? But you do review things that go onto the city commission. The BCA, you're reviewing variances, class A requests, expansions of a class A. Interpretations may come to the board. So these are items that are legal per se, right? That you're really looking at the code and what the code says. And it does this proposal meet all the items in the code? So it's very formal in that respect. But, I mean, Kevin can tell me how we spell about serving.
I think it's a little bit more fine detail than this. And the way that you go through things, either it needs the code or it does not. There's a lot less room for interpretation in what we can see. So I'm not, I wouldn't be like, when you do make decisions, don't get afraid of the, like, quasi judicial nature of it. You've got to have some pretty well attended meetings in the past. But it all has been interesting and effective.
If we have a meeting, so we only have a meeting when we have items submitted, it'll be the first Thursday.
We've made the code so good that they hardly have any reason for variances anymore. They're, I mean, really, the number of variances has dropped dramatically since three top ones.
I used to get over 20 a year that had a process, and we're at three variances a week. In my own code.
So the BCA representative is a requirement by statute that there is a representative to basically to still take communication between the planning commission and the board of zoning appeals. And that works fairly well, having somebody on the planning commission to know what's going on in the board of zoning appeals. It's a good thing. And it is like Andrea said, it's all quasi judicial in the board of zoning appeals. You have quasi judicial roles too, but those are all quasi judicial cases. They're all subject of court. And in fact, we're in court right now with the board of zoning appeals. And that's fine. It's considered any time for a different outcome. But if decisions are made according to good practices that we preach and try to teach you, we're not going to hold in court. Things will, things will usually get to that. We haven't had many cases before. And the one that's important now is an administrative decision. If the decision, I mean, that's fine.
Commissioner, I would like to nominate Commissioner Perry for the planning commission representative of the zoning appeals.
All right, is there a second?
Sir. Thank you very much for doing what's it's quite enlightening, especially while you're serving.
Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? All right, all those in favor of ballots better, meaning are you representatives to the board of zoning appeals, say aye. All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, next item of business that completes our election of officers. Planning commission bylaws, potential updates. Everybody have a chance to review our bylaws? Any updates? Or things that are standing?
Haven't updated bylaws in four years. And most of the, most of the bylaws that were updated last time were just clerical errors, corrections, but I think we did update the bylaws to say that the election of officers would occur in March, so that we would have fully any it was February before we presented some issues because the the new appointees are, are all the terms ended February on this board. So now we're on better footing with that. So everybody's in their terms by the time we elect officers.
Just a question for Sarah. Is there any reason we have to renew or should this be changed because we're moved to have more decisions needed administratively? I didn't particularly see anything.
Well, say that again, because he's at
Yeah, from the commission bylaws, we've reduced the scope of projects coming to the planning commission.
Yeah.
In the face of what administrative decisions.
Is there any place in here that we should treat like that? Have, did you see anything like that?
I was just wondering. That's a good point. I'm not sure that there is. The only thing I thought maybe could stand be updated was the agenda order. Because now we do have a different order if you look at the agenda for today. It's a little different than what's presented in here under item G2. We have conflict of interest plus something added above the time we have, time we have data that's already developed and adopted. We do have a regular item on here for training, although we don't always have something for training.
I didn't see that it's, are we still doing the reserving of time for future comments? And number, in app, here, let her have. The reserved, and I long for me to request time to speak later.
No, that's basically, people can reserve and come up and say, I want to speak on this issue, might need to address it. Or they can just address their comments.
Okay.
Right when they go up there about the agenda. So I'd say as far as the order goes here for the agenda, the only thing to change that needs to be added training item after correspondence.
Sure.
So I believe this rules called projects to code driven. I don't even know where it just wasn't even the one.
Oh, we've changed that.
Pardon?
And we've changed that to how the both meetings be used as seminal dates now.
Oh, yeah, right, yeah, right. But I did market it during the trade this week. Thought this still reflected that they
Yeah, that's a lot.
So, so the item two changes, we've got the addition of training and the procedure.
So, yeah, training is under item G2. And training and the procedures.
I am three. Again, it just says time of the first two sessions, once the second one's on the first meeting.
Okay, so item B1 under section three. All right, get it. So we'll be changing item B1 under section three to say that for applications of 20 business days prior to schedule.
Are there any other updates that anybody saw? All right.
The motion to approve bylaws, opposing changes.
We got a second. Commissioner Pickman, a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. All right, now we're moving on to number five. Citizens wishing to address the commission on non-agenda items. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to correspondence reports and minutes. We received some correspondence regarding the county climate action plan. If you want to make this.
Yeah, so as I sent an email to you, and when I emailed you the actual draft, it's a draft action plan. We will put this back on the agenda at the next meeting. And any comments that have been gathered by you, you can send your comments to me or to Sarah. We will discuss those at the next meeting. And then we'll pass those on to the county planning office. It's a really good effort that they're putting forward with this. And they have a new county administrator. And hopefully, the new county administrator is going to be as supportive of this kind of thing as Scott Urpers was. He's a very diligent champion of us addressing climate adaptation and mitigation.
All right, thank you. We'll look forward to comments that are next meeting. Moving on, there are no trainings this evening. We get into our work session on updates of land development code independence.
Okay, the first item is adding the word boarding panel into our pet boarding facility. Do you guys have any issues with that?
Were we having problems with, what's the reasoning for that?
Because we didn't have a boarding panel in it, so people have to do panels when we think about them as panels, so.
Okay. Commissioner Lawrie.
So veterinary clinics actually have patients over there as well? On recovery?
But they're not, they're not boarding, they're there as a patient.
Just as far as being able to have to get a second license.
Yeah, and if they were doing the pet boarding where it's not who used to their use, then it's a separate use.
So under the definition of veterinary clinic, there below, it says that the clinic includes customary hands or cages within the walls of the clinic structure. It shall not include overnight boarding unless they improve the pet boarding facilities. We could amend that, say, just to strike that sentence. It shall not include that part of the sentence, but shall not include. I don't think that's probably a necessary change.
All right, Ms. Lawrie.
At one of our previous meetings, we talked about whether the planning commission wanted to add the heavy vehicle equipment sale, rental and display use. Planning commission said yes. Stated, you know, what zoning districts you'd like to see. And we added some use requirements. One of the questions that Steve asked about the state requires sign off from, from the city for this. And I already reviewed and saw something for vehicle dealers or seller campers, trailers, to that one view for this. So in the previous meeting, planning commission wanted to see this as a permitted use in the general, commercial, regional, commercial, and industrial. And then I tapped in the light vehicle so you guys can see the comparison. And then these are the proposed requirements. And in blue are just areas that you guys might want to have discussion about.
Setbacks. No outdoor sales in display areas shall be permitted within the required yards. And in general, commercial zoning districts, the area must be set back 10 feet from the property line. That seems to be no opinion. Commissioner Lawrie.
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't think you can display vehicles on property, you know? And we can still leave the whole 20 or 30 foot setback that might be required to actually industrial, it's a 40 foot setback. Setback. Regional, commercial, it's 30 feet.
Okay.
We don't seem to be requiring that of car dealers, I think it went in here, you know, language. But car dealerships that have been operating in the city and continue to operate in the city will have a setback. It's being enforced under the E8. You know, the capital keeper vehicles in parking spaces or paved areas on true park service area. As far as I know, we want to complete this, and for quite a few reasons, that goals that they park in clear vision drive. There used to be a couple car dealerships on West Bosch Main Street that used to prep them. They would create the curve that presents problems, problems, but that those are on my business and ones that I hear at all. Keeping them behind the sideline, just a couple of feet, they don't seem to interfere with any use of public property. But they're not, they're feedback on the
So RC is 30 feet, general commercial 0 feet, and IM is 40.
I don't, I don't feel that all we have to do is require that they keep them on their own property, not like pushing them anyway. Or maybe a 3 to 5 foot setback or something to have those.
Okay.
Which one, 3 or 5?
We can see only 3 feet.
And allow more equipment in? Yeah. Does anybody disagree with that?
There was an earlier statement that we were up here, there's a PC one, he's there in the screen. We're saying it's a display area.
Referring to the screening, are we going to get to that, abiding the residential zone property?
Okay, abiding residential property.
Yeah. Did you want to talk about that one? Do you guys have an issue with that?
Residential property.
Okay, and you had a lot size, any thoughts on the no less than one half acre of land? So you're okay with seeing either? All right, that's it for that one.
Could I also, I'd suggest the really, what I
Okay.
That was, really what I was asking was does the state require something different than a car dealer's license to sell? That's the order here, or do they require a car dealer's license to sell any equipment?
No, I didn't advise anything on that.
Because we did, we do have that language.
Yeah, and it's only because it's, it's all under the vehicle when you're selling a vehicle. They didn't have anything separate for heavy equipment.
Okay, so they probably do have to have it if it's licensable as a vehicle.
As a vehicle for a camper or like a trailer, if that's licensed.
Okay. And how do you deal with vehicles for sale by order?
You mean on their private property?
Yes.
So sort of not something we generally, by complaint, is the answer probably. We've had some issues where we've, we've been proactive about trying to plant, like when the Shaco property was vacant for a while. There were people that were bringing cars in there and selling them on the lot. And we had to target we trucked and there's some international company that owned the property and tried to get we eventually did. But that's the kind of thing, that's, that's all my situation. We really felt like compelled to try to go and find the property owners and stop them from, try to, try and get them to stop. So cars on the
I just bring it up because it seems like 30's language in here that we prevented if the city was aggressively enforcing it. But doesn't seem to do, and I think it's good to basically promote it as a form of reuse recycling. Or should you do that?
You know, we have a lot of administrative discretion and enforcement. And so depending on the issue, it's more or less aggressively pursued. And a lot of the time it has to do with complaints.
One of the other planning commissions put a timeframe on a for sale white one that could only sit there for so many months. And that, that kind of just created a problem. So that somebody doesn't come and have three used vehicles sitting in their front yard. So you might think if, if, if it really becomes a problem, that might be a solution.
Well, as far as front yards, but we don't allow people to park in front yards.
No, but in their driveway or whatever that they're selling, that they're not moving, it's not being moved, it's sitting there. That was how it was at the time. I'm just throwing that out there.
For active commercial properties, so if you don't have a license to sell cars, you're basically not allowed advertising cars, but again, we have some discretion of enforcing them. And so as long as it's kind of get out of control and people don't complain about it, it's not a problem for us.
Okay. Storage units.
Indoor storage. Am I just correct you guys talked a little bit about this at the last meeting?
You did.
So Logan came in. Right, right. So we wrote up some proposals for new and changing definitions, adding uses and requirements, and changing some special names used to committed for different uses. So we can start with the indoor storage definition? Do you guys have any thoughts on that?
I had a question regarding indoor storage and then the self-storage being separate items. Because it says a type of personal indoor storage for the self-storage, but then indoor storage is also indoors. How are they differentiated?
Um how are they differentiated in this?
So self-storage will be a type of indoor storage, but it's going, going further, so it's gonna have more, it's gonna have separate regulations for it.
Okay.
So for instance, like um.
Being accessible by the owner of the storage item is meaningful in the main thing, so it's differentiated.
So an indoor storage could be um, you know, building that has indoor storage and they're not leasing out separate. Areas that can only be accessed by that owner.
Okay, so it's individualized um storage of units for self-storage versus indoor storage is just. It could be a giant warehouse that's all one and the, the owner of the property has to take the person through there, so. Okay. Have any thoughts on that?
And then we're adding outdoor to the open storage. Can I move on then? Then we're at, we deleted the old warehouse definition, adding a new warehousing definition.
And making that more commercial, uh yes, Commissioner Lawrie.
Just, I'm just wondering how this definition applies to um. Some of it is exact because it's in this whole way. Places like Overstock Construction, Checkered Bus, um. The coal storage businesses up on South Front Street, eighteen hundred block. They don't seem to fit into this definition.
Well, they might be indoor storage, um well, some is indoor, some is outdoor, yeah, it's kind of, they're probably being one or the other. There's outdoor storage down South Front Street. A lot of those businesses up like in the town, those drivers, outdoor, open storage.
But they're not typically for, we say, only this usually. I don't know that would classify this warehouse. One of the storage. A lot of this is equipment storage. I don't know if that's addressed elsewhere or doesn't need to be addressed, whatever it is.
We can add that to the indoor storage definition, equipment storage.
Well, it's, it's indoor, it's outdoor, but I guess it uh it's happening and you don't wanna end up. Placing businesses in an unconforming status because of language they'll be adopting here. Especially when they've been doing it for decades will not create any problems. I know how difficult this gets, I regret the amount of wordless language and specifications and it's very difficult at times. So I appreciate the continued reviews and this, who else is?
So before, we had the, the storage bulk, storage open and then warehousing slash storage, right?
Yeah.
Where did those businesses fit in beforehand?
Well, very loosely, it would have been warehousing, storage and then out, open storage.
Okay. Yeah, so the indoor storage is a, is a really good addition because it addresses some things that really aren't where I'm. Or like it made it an argument that if there's some, some is the same, but that just had the equipment and. Stuff like pipe and other heavy materials. That's more, that's your, probably fall under the indoor storage, if it's indoor products.
As long as we're not requiring them to be drained of fuels and things like that, that's. So it's called, they're just practices.
Yeah, that would just be in itself storage. Then the wholesale definition, we just wanted to be a little more clear about that there's a difference between the uh. Trade, wholesale trade businesses and warehousing. Okay.
And as Dave said, the wholesale trade and wholesale chain. Then here is the chart. So in green showing all those existing uses that we have, yellow are the changes um. That being proposed and then we didn't know how, how we felt about um permitted for indoor storage and self-storage facility in the general commercial. That's why it's highlighted.
Anyone having thoughts on that? Commissioner Lawrie.
Well, I think I raised the point last meeting was that um. I don't have a problem with indoor or self-storage in general commercial. Basically, if it's conversion of an existing building that might be obsolete or it's intended use for maybe an old school or an office building or something, but. I don't, that we really want to promote a lot of single storage, storage parties within, I get the commercial districts.
So we, we got the map there showing the general commercial really fairly, the, the West Washington Street on the highway here is a little bit. And South, uh South Common, the whole now, and then the now in South Marquette on Division Street. And uh the Highway, both street selection. And most of those parcels are fairly small. Which kind of corresponds with our recommendation in there and uh. For standards where we get to, uh. Let's see, the self-storage. Recommendation that the size be limited to forty thousand square feet, only footprint. So if there's not a lot of lots in the general commercial um that would be able to accommodate that. I mean, there are some bigger lots, obviously, over by the west, western part of the city, but most of the lots are. Are smaller than that, which like might be able to comprise some lots.
Yeah, yeah. I really think that's primary commercial property that can serve a higher purpose and a higher tax return to the city. Than having to occupy the storage parts. And I think we should be trying to encourage that higher use. You know, maybe if it's a secondary use on portion of the property, such as we have with the motel on South McCole or something. And Mr. Cool's Corporation, it's sort of, it's not the primary use of the property, it's filling in some. Back portion of the property that wasn't needed for the primary use, how could we write that into our code of that? You know, the limit of the size of those.
You have to, if you're, having to look at accessory uses.
Yes.
So you say accessory use, indoor storage, accessory use, self-storage, so if you want it to be changed, but if they were primary uses, they'd be written like that. We could add two more and call them accessory uses.
Do that, I guess I'd like to protect that property for higher use.
But I do like your idea and other municipalities have done it where it is an abandoned school that's falling apart and. They turned it into storage and it was, it created jobs because a lot of homes and stuff were stored in there because it was. Where there was water craft around and it was a good use of the facility. So, and then he started doing a feat to the building itself, which was nice. So your idea that if the structure is kind of how good it's useful, that's it could be a good conversion to something like that.
I think maybe even a portion of your hospital would have been suitable for something like that.
No, exactly, and you're gonna have structures come up, so I'm not opposed to that. I'd rather have it maintained than to have it become this falling apart. So I don't know. I'm hearing a lot of grumbling from down the other end with the experts.
I just don't know.
I just, I'm not, you know, but I'm not opposed to that use, because definitely. Because according to Logan, we really have a shortage of storage facilities. So the more, I don't know.
For the time being, I guess if we approved the proposed language, it just left out the uh, the general commercial district. It might work, just try to work on another future, I mean, to uh, to allow it in the general commercial in some other form.
Okay. Commissioner Bass.
Yeah, I was gonna comment on that, I would use that rate, I can feel, make sure that those large lots and take them for use of um storage units. It's just like being word out and always knowing the size of what they could be, but if we did permit for those locations, maybe some of their.
So are you saying what we have right now, indoor storage, self, remove any allowance in the GC. Then add accessory use for both of those, so add two more uses, but then allow that to be permitted in the GC, RC and IM.
If you're finding out what we define, before we know what accessory could be.
We would know that because accessory uses is defined.
Can you pull up the map for the regional commercial? See, we're talking about that, that's.
So regional commercial is this color right here, it's in use different areas.
Okay, not very much at all.
And then industrial is blue. We have like more than anymore and then we have in the north part of that.
Yes.
I'm curious, if I'm um special, yeah, this to use and next use. What, what thinks of that, be allowed, allowed that to be next use areas, but.
I don't know, right now it's not.
Right, it's not at the moment, it's not being proposed, I have a question.
So I kind of thought you guys would lean towards special land use for um the general commercial areas. And not allow this for mixed use based on residential or mixed use. Any comments on that?
Seeing how she had an example where some like, by a building for two years use area, they want to, or to storage, it is renewed by us. And I mean, if you're like you forgot too, because the building that was being used, would be allowed for that too.
It's your choice, that's, and if you prefer to talk about it at the next meeting when we got maybe some bodies here. That may be a, a good way to.
I mean, if you want us to draw what you're discussing, you can add that, so you can really see what that looks like. Ain't that something that those people in case in the future, we can discuss, we're just talking right now.
Well, I guess one of the, it looks like it might be suitable for when you get, say, the older portion of that's medical center. It's pretty much saying make a big bell.
He has ideas, I, I spoke with him. And he would really like to see that as housing because we're so short of apartments and. He was wondering if senior housing, but not where you needed medical care, but just senior apartments.
I think that's much better use of it, but rather than see it knocked down or something.
Oh, yeah, and so I was, I was planning on bringing that up at the next meeting, so, yeah, that's. That structure is basically not being utilized except by a very few practices. And um they wondered if, what kind of zoning they'd have to go through to make that a resident, a resident area. But we're as short of housing as we are and that's a nice central location to make that. Be available to make apartments or whatever, so they're next use, they're gonna like that. Well, it, it wouldn't be them, they would try to find somebody that would want to develop that.
Yeah, but thinking they can do that.
No, it's probably, I support the commission members. The rules that we look at as a special use for mixed use, but you might want to tie it to reuse of an existing structure. Special uh, mixed use areas, got it, and develop them to, to hold on go.
Right.
So then would you apply special land use to the GC? You were talking about not even making a decision on the GC. GC is commercial already.
I would be more, I'd prefer having it special and use in GC than in mixed use. But I do see, yeah, I agree that the reuse of building could be like the only application that I would look at in mixed use.
Yeah, I, I'm kind of hesitant to put it in mixed use too.
And we're talking about just self-storage or indoor and indoor.
I guess I'm not sure what the demand is for the indoor storage. I feel like a more, yeah. I feel the demand would be higher for self-storage.
There's some, there's some uh indoor storage facilities around the city and, you know, one just burned down a few years ago.
That's why, I don't really care about gas or any stuff, and draining the tools.
I want to say have more storage, that's not what I'm saying, I just. I, and I don't want to make it too difficult, especially for homeowners to have additional storage. I mean, within reason, I mean, you know, you can build a building bigger than your house and add a storage.
To a certain degree, you don't want to encourage one even, right, in an urban area. Because it really comes down to choices people make in public, they, their consumerism to some extent. You want to encourage people to just go wild and file stuff up when said they got the broad stuff they can use.
It all comes into you, sir. No comment?
You have a direction?
Um yeah, I don't know.
Well, I don't, you have. Sorry, for GC, what is your answer on that? Special land use, would you like to see that?
We can go down the line and say land use or.
I would support, in general commercial, I would support special land use or permitted use. I would be personally, but I see your concerns.
Either special or permitted, but um if it was permitted, it should be accessory use only. How do you view this, Steve?
Yeah. Okay, I know that direction.
Okay. Well, we didn't hear from you. I didn't say anything.
Well, they want you to, they want to know.
What's your opinion? For the indoor storage, should it be a special land use in the general commercial or permitted use? Or only permitted if it's an accessory? I don't know, I guess I would go with permitted.
If honestly we have some way to utilize buildings that are, that are kind of stuck in some of these areas, that we wouldn't deteriorate the surrounding area, I think, I would be, you know, would not be opposed to that. Like, I'm thinking of a school that ends up closing, that, you know.
So you want that for both mixed use and general?
That I could live with, but it's gotta be very specific. That's why when he said that he'd have to get a special land use, because you're, this quote, maybe old hospital, there's a building left. And for special land use, it could be evaluated if that would be a good fit for storage. It might not be a good fit. And if it was special land use, then we would be able to think about how that impacts the area.
So majorities and special. All right, so I'll draw that up, and then we'll also add the two uses of accessory use for each. And then let's move on to your thoughts.
Just, just one more quick point before we leave that chart, of your, uh, major repair maintenance operations. Can we, uh, have that as permitted in the municipal and the civic? With situations like the fiscal service center and the bus garage and. Major repair and maintenance operations. They exist under municipal already and under civic. And since we usually have very little say in, in those trying to meet the, trying to, um, end up in court anyway, I think it would be probably just committed in the.
Does that affect John's when we're looking at John?
John's auto?
John's auto? Wasn't that a similar situation or?
It wouldn't have been municipal or, uh, city. People still be, oh, they're not major repair maintenance, they're, they're not, uh, light vehicle. Yeah, light vehicle dealers, yeah, but I mean, the city's operations, BLP is already allowed over here, but drive, where the city's, uh, from.
No, that's, that's a good catch. Yeah, yeah, um, civic, municipal. Yeah.
Something matters with a couple of pieces, maybe boxes.
Right.
Yeah. I agree, I agree.
Okay, so we're gonna rework this, uh, chart of, of the storage uses and come up with accessory uses. And then we're gonna talk about it again at the next meeting.
I would like to, then keep moving around here. So for the bulk storage, did you guys have any, uh, comments to the proposed changes in that? Adding the zoning compliance again, or zoning management share your thoughts?
Oh, sorry, sorry, I go back.
Way back to the chart.
No, let me get back to the chart. Um, I kind of have some misgivings about, um, industrial manufacturing. You know, permitted use for storage units, given the size and location of building you gotta be planning. Sort of a four million year's plan, it's like, if you have a storage unit as we're driving to our style, right on the, um, late for drive. Not sure I wanna see that. I don't, I don't know if that we can make that a special land use for that. I don't think anybody has any other thoughts about that.
So you're saying you want the industrial to be a special land use for the indoors of storage?
I guess indoor, okay.
You're thinking.
I was thinking, um, outdoor storage.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Scratch that. Yeah. Looking for.
Oh, okay. Um, so for the bulk storage, did you guys have any, um, issues with adding the zoning compliance? Because it's not always a special land use in the zoning management share, okay? And then moving to the indoor storage, what are your thoughts on these regulations?
Mission back.
So, um, could be four planets that's at breakfast, is it? Okay, yeah, so part B there, I'm curious why we are requiring, um, I mean, it's safety, very important. But why are we requiring it instead of the business with your insurance company making sure these things are covered?
Well, so already with storage, the fire department would prefer the safety of it, right?
It's not our code at the moment.
And, okay, okay, yeah, those questions. And then second thing, um, suggestion was, uh, the second, the last sentence on B, batteries shall be removed from the post before storage. Could we state the same thing, um, or, I'm sorry, different. Creating batteries shall be removed on vehicles before storage or disconnected?
Oh, sure.
And I think that also goes into that, in that section too.
Um, if someone's willing or wants to store, say, an electric vehicle where batteries are not removable, or maybe not allowing them to restore those in those facilities. Any questions?
Yeah, would that be part of what I just asked, how would you disconnect?
If disconnect doesn't work, no.
It's not possible.
That's not a, that's not an option.
Not all of them. It depends if you're disconnected or if you're. That's kind of the same question I had, is where, well, you guys and things they have to, they'll have batteries. Oh, that's perhaps one of the major things people might want to store.
Yeah.
People tell them you can't store battery, so where do they store the battery? Kitchen, is it a better place or, uh, right?
Yeah, I, I, I.
I, I understand the fear of safety part of it, but I don't believe the building that burned down on the day cited was caused by a battery or fuel, I can't call it exactly, you know, but there were vehicles in there that had fuel in them and, yeah, I think even some propane and, uh, things like the food truck and stuff. And, um, typically, and you can't drain all the fuel out of the vehicle, still remove it from the storage jacks, so you have to use some fuel in it. Hey, I do think it becomes an issue that we probably should leave to the storage owner that in the, they can.
So are you guys looking to strike all of A then, or just the last two sentences?
Uh, depends on how we interpret personally, uh, sentence of the. Obviously, we don't work out story. Case is divided, I guess, but.
And who's gonna believe that? I mean, is it a doable ordinance? Are you gonna go and check out a storage facility?
Well, when they submit, depending if that, if it's a special land use or permitted use, they have to provide that statement on their site plan.
Mission back.
So do we want to remind that the business that, that all these storage facilities shows what their safety is for? Things like fuel, batteries, or anything else? They kind of figure it out themselves, how good it is.
I think we're getting into questions we can't answer. There are some things we just, we can't, we're not gonna enforce, and we're not, we, we don't go around inspecting businesses to make sure they don't, they comply with their requirements, but it's just, that's not possible.
I think we should leave it up to fire court, gradually add, so I just.
So we'll talk to the fire department about the, um, well, I understand. That's why I wanna go through these, so we can get everything up to date for you in the next meeting.
There are very few storage places that actually push your vehicle into the storage spot and pull it back out. Starting to help. Even more rooms, I believe, are typically stored with the propane tanks attached.
The whole looking at batteries, I know that it is just, compounds this problem infinite like this, is they're so prevalent now. It may not be possible to say you have, you know, batteries disconnected or, I, I don't see how you can make that requirement.
I, I don't see, you can't, given how they're engineered right now.
And then even, you know, flammable hazardous material is, is present probably in almost every home in the city. And it's gonna be present in a lot of storage units. From various, various, such as one, you know, yourself, so I, we do need to ask the fire department for a little guidance.
Okay.
So the next one, C through G?
Um, the storage facility is off?
Yeah, we're still on indoor.
Okay, we're still on indoor. Thank you, Stan, I felt pressure a lot.
Um, just about the, uh, how are we dealing with, uh, under date, um, previous card? Open storage and equipped vehicles and materials, it's supposed to be screened, covered, fueled from the streets. How are we dealing with the storage boats? Those vehicles that.
Lower harbor.
It's a different zone of the district.
Um, they added that there's a use in the downtown waterfront for that. They're allowing me.
And that's all you're up to create your stores?
That I don't know, but I know there's something about storage of boats in the downtown waterfront.
Probably not, not there, includes the fish. There's, there's several parcels that do that, most of it is not, if you go in the street.
So if they're existing, they're already allowed.
And then you have any issues with C through G?
I mean, if, if those, that, see, that open storage part, where we have this, uh, uses are GC, RC, municipal civic, industrials, conservation rack, B L T. Is any of those districts where, you know, you wanna just allow that? I mean, it seems like in almost every one of those, you wouldn't really require screening necessarily, or you have uses, I think, this or you know, screening, it's already, you know, not existent, you have these uses happening. The, the one I see is conservation rack. Like, I don't know, definitely not screening. That's, I mean, all of those conservation racks.
I just said, just, right, pose, we're, we're developing new regulations that we look at existing businesses or land uses that, especially those that have been in place for decades. And they are creating, maybe not confirmed in some fashion by the language we're working in, that we tailor it so that doesn't happen.
The interesting thing is, this was at the previous.
Okay, unless there's a history of complaints about it. We're trying to develop language because we're getting complaints, I think that's admirable, but if there's no complaints, then I don't think we should be putting additional regulations on businesses that you're not gonna be able to comply with.
So, yeah, this wasn't the old code, they brought that through, so this was a requirement back then, so.
And that's part of why we have these meetings and have these conversations.
If you're wanting to make a change now and saying that you don't want us to have any screening requirements for open storage, now's the time when we're looking at it.
So one, one, I, one, I mean, one, one place where open storage is a real eyesore in the public areas is up near Enterprise Drive, in your natural park, like that. When they don't have full leaves on the trees, leaves on the trees, you can see, I mean, it looks like crap. But you got all this laid down equipment and junk, broken cement, all that stuff up there. So, in, in a way, that's a, that's a good requirement, but maybe not every, you know, not everywhere in every situation. Is it realistic to wanna have those screening requirements? Some places, yes.
In that case, lawyers, lawyers, yeah, material, and we wouldn't be able to regulate any of that. And other pieces. A lot of those, um, uses were there before the city put the bike path there. And like one of the trees on the bike path, I believe, for screening.
And probably adding this requirement to the old code, my guess.
Yeah. But, yeah, I, I do think there may be an appropriate role in some places. But I guess I'm just suggesting in the future, if we're gonna start adding language, let's, let's look at existing uses first and try to identify them, whether the language puts additional regulations on there, would, would be difficult to comply with. Am I not fair?
Especially if we want more storage.
Do we want to encourage more businesses and not chase anybody else?
Right.
So are the warrants, do they make any changes to existing languages?
Not, it's, not, it's working the way it is, I guess.
Yeah, so it would be for any of the new businesses now, all the ones that you kind of drive or pull cars that in the code. For instance, if a person working on cars decided that they want to have all vehicles that they're done with just parked all the way along the street and the front yard and all that, would you want that to happen, or would you prefer that to be parking in the rear, behind being screened? So this would protect.
There's plenty of examples of work in code of what you're talking about.
Right, right. So this would be for those who knew, so they would have to provide how they're gonna meet, meet that with this. The old, the other ones who are definitely existing, not forming. I don't know when they added the open storage, but they may have added it after seeing all those old uses with it, getting out of control possibly. But I just know this is the exact language that was in the old nineteen eighty's code.
So I have to go, wanna tie this, so to the permit, the, the use chart, and also, you know, have you guys considered that? Because we have these permitted or showing highlighted in green.
And either existing.
Yeah, but do you wanna change any of this? This, like, if you wanna change anything to special use where you have more more say and be able to put conditions on it, that's where special land use is that tool. And it seems like maybe you want that control for some areas? Conservation rack districts? Really don't?
Well, currently required, well, I guess, if they were in use, they would be required to screen if they were a buddy, like in a zoning district, correct? That's what it says in the. Well, I think just.
If that environment just requires them to screen, some of them are not applicable or?
Well, I guess, either conservation recreation or a residential. But even tourist park can't, or it wasn't built until after those industrial uses were on the property next door. Yeah. So in that case, if it's, if it's, uh, a new use on, you know, a municipal or conservation recreation and they don't wanna look at the neighbors' job and it's their operation, screen on their property, and go back to somebody that's already there.
So if it's a new use on conservation recreation, is not applicable for them to put in any screen? Per the required operating regulations that? Per the required upper degree of that respect?
Because typically it becomes their, it would be their option and likely their desire to screen.
So the only thing is if they were doing outdoor storage is a requirement, not the upper.
It's kind of like the fire department, you can't, if the other uses there first, you come along and go like it, you can do something that you're not required, prior order to do something. Sure.
One, like the, uh, the outdoor, the open storage, outdoor storage as is with permitted uses across the more of that. And across on that, with the standards that we have in.
I can see that's into a serious complaints to be used to just. I agree.
Do you think it needs to be added to any of your other zones of districts? Like makes you a general business or a good guy? So indoor storage, C through G, any comments, thoughts on those? Alright, so then self-storage. Uh, B, we will, uh, talk to the fire department on that. You guys have any thoughts about the other A and then C through L?
Yes, we're on self-storage though?
Yeah.
Yeah. I guess when you see no other activity on individual storage, typically those properties have to sell and property if the ashes or clear types of sales on those properties. They're lacking material in here, where else can you? And again, if we're going to allow them as an accessory use on properties, then we have to other activity on the property. And then on B, I guess the same, same thing applies to fire coalitions. And G, um, who type of volume should have an individual door to the outdoors? You're using existing buildings, if they just need to a public corner or hallway without to, you know, doors.
Any thoughts on Commissioner Lowery's?
Yeah, no, that's pointing, that's smart, it's a catch, because there are businesses that don't have the full completely closed building, but they'll have hallways and things to individual storage. So have a room, potentially, or something like that. Or modeling.
Do you guys looking at this, do you think that we need to add any parking requirements for the indoor storage, bulk storage, and self-storage facility to the article line table?
I'd recommend not.
I thought you didn't see me reading it too. Alright, then you're done. Next was, uh, I think you talked about this at the last meeting as well, about the brain gutter language. And after looking at that, um, we decided to rewrite the section a little bit. And changing the stormwater section as shown. Did you guys have any comments on that?
Um, paragraph three, um. I guess. It's moving on, I want to see this, was where, um. Some divisions like Cherry Hills, where the streets were built in the bulk property and all the lots smoked in it. Hence, um, so I'm assuming the creation system was pretty good at that, but uh, some of those lots, we won't have an alternative to direct full wire elsewhere. Especially if they're rocky, lots, things, uh. Even in Cherry Hills, most of that is made in silvery, it's not very permeable soil, so. So I run out, comes only on the street, it's quite prepared. I agree that it shouldn't go on to neighboring lot, but, um. I think the public grid in many cases is the only alternative, was deciding portions of the city to accept that.
That's a good catch.
The, there's already, I guess, a plan review and, and some other regulations that prohibit large redevelopment from not being wired onto the public sponsor system. Or offer the incentive of giving them store wire credits on their utility building, providing up protection. But especially for residential, um, I think that's the way to protect some of the adjacent residential lots in this case. I think it's just a matter of interpreting this language, it doesn't say, um, which you can put in the right way, it doesn't state. It says a, uh, adjacent property.
Yeah, adjoining property, so the, maybe the fix for this, to, to deal with this issue right away, it's just to say a joint pro, private property.
Doesn't that take off the sword? So I think that's a good, I think that's a good change, I agree with David.
Yeah. Yeah. Alright.
And who did you guys talk about this in the last meeting as well? You brought up, um, the certificate of occupancy language, the existing language in A.
Yes.
And since we, the city, do not issue a certificate of occupancy, that should be linked, that's the county. So we proposed for a nation of that, same language that you guys are okay with, with B. And then proposed, um, since the language of strictly occupancy, uh, having met or performance guarantee has been posted in accordance with provisions at fourth, so since that was struck out, the idea was bringing in its own paragraph. And then do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, we're bringing that back up.
That for, for two hundred bonds, right?
Yeah, and maybe required, um, is a change here that from what was in there before. So, um, that will give you ability to do that through special land use through you, or even for site planer you, uh, impose conditions, which, um, so.
I just thought we decided we didn't want to have the amount of the bond.
No, you asked for it to be brought back.
Oh, okay, I thought we decided we wanted to do that.
The first conversation you guys had about that, the tone of the conversation was like, we're going to charge developers this. We're going to collect this money that they're never going to get back, it was kind of, it was never brought up that in virtually every case, the developer's going to get their bond back.
Right.
They do what they're supposed to do. Their bond is only on there now, so when they don't do what they're supposed to. And you don't even want to have that flexibility to be able to impose a bond. I mean, I, I personally feel like the landscaping bond is a worthwhile thing to have in a small amount of money, five thousand dollars on a large project, but you, you're, I'm, you're, you're. But taking away the flexibility to even impose that, that condition is also, that seems like.
I was just concerned at the cost for the developer who's already spending thousands on the landscaping is what, what we're talking about.
Maybe hundreds of thousands.
Right, exactly. And now, I don't know, which calls, who's to give them up right now, I haven't gotten one. So I don't know what kind of hardship that does on the developer.
I think allowing for it is okay, and the key difference here compared to what was initially proposed is a maybe. It gives us that option.
This is, that's the flexibility that we're seeing.
Yep. I'm, I'm in favor of this language as presented.
What amount? We just have access there, you guys have a bottom.
Right. Um, I think it should be a realistic fee, but not. Yeah, I don't know, could, that.
You're, you gotta talk to the developer.
Yeah, I'm sure pretty much.
No, I, I, I mean, I think. I mean, on all this stuff, we should have the word, based on the photography, have some of this stuff, but not on the landscaping. If you say maybe, it's either going to have to be, you will. This maybe stuff doesn't work.
Well, if that planning commission has the, has the ability to impose conditions, if it thinks that this is a development that we should have on, for whatever reason, maybe this is.